All right, again, thank you, everybody, if you were here. A couple of weeks ago when we had that incident, I apologize, and then I believe we've got everything secured moving forward. So I want to thank right away my staff, Mike Wilkinson, Lynn Bellwick, and Sarah Beth Nimison for their work on this budget, but especially I'm going to thank my financial director, Lisa Hancock, who's been my shepherd and sage through this entire process. And as you'll see, I rely on her heavily. So moving along to page three in our document here. This is really the nuts and bolts of our proposed budget. If you look about quarter way down the middle column, the total town government off the right, you'll see the total the town government that I proposed is thirteen million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand and fifty-one dollars for a proposed increase of five point eleven percent. The next line is the Board of Education have proposed that forty-two million, nine hundred and eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars at a proposed increase of three percentage. The town operating budget, the town, the total operating budget and Board of Education is fifty-six million, six hundred and seventy-one thousand, nine hundred and six for three point five percent increase. The total capital improvement and debt service is increases five million, five million, sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-one dollars. The total town appropriations for sixty-one million, seven hundred and forty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Moving along. So this is, um, you want to get it up? So go ahead a couple of pages. All right, town revenues. This is a historical and proposed budget revenues. And you can see on the very top line is a list of our state and federal grants. That is trending well, and we have hired a grants person in towns or looking to hopefully to keep that increasing, but we get punished in other areas and we'll get to that. You'll see our license fees and permits is also trending well. If you go all the way down to the right columns, we're looking, we're expecting them to be around. And then the last line in that top column is the education grants, and that one hurts. That is the ECS that we keep, that money, that money keeps dropping. And we're looking to do anything we can to help that go up. The next column, historical proposed budget expenditures percentages. That's the trending percentages increases or decreases over the previous six years. And you can see all the way to the right, the proposed launch increase of five point one to the town, three point oh for the Board of Ed and a total of three point four oh overall. Next is a column or the next group or column there, the third one down is the grand list growth, which has been trending very well as well. So that's in a decent place. Based on the proposed budget, the last group grouping down there, you'll see all the way to the right that is proposed increase of point eighty-five percent on the increase. But looking along that line, that is the last six years or so, and you'll see there's been fluctuations within that range over the last six years. So this is the projected decreases or increases for twenty-three, twenty-four from non-tax revenue sources. The most painful as you'll see on this page is the ECS. The net revenue increase down the bottom from non-tax sources is a hundred and ten thousand and six hundred and three dollars. Looking at our fund balance, an amount of two hundred thousand from the fund balance is recommended to be used as revenue. Also sixty-eight thousand from the added fund balance for debt will be used. Rating agencies recommend that the fund balance percentage for towns with a triple A rating like Talon is being in the range of ten to fifteen percent. We are this is not a revenue source that should be relied upon in the future is a one-time use of funds that may not be able to be duplicated in future years. And here's a history of our unassigned fund balance. You can see where they want our triple A rating to be. Go on to the next column or the next page. This paints a pretty good picture that our state aid and red seems to be steadily decreasing, and we're more reliant on property taxes. This expenditure summary here, again, more nuts and bolts. This is a clear look at last year versus this year. It gives us a clear picture of the proposed three point four percent increase. All these numbers I mentioned before. But if you look at the second to last column going down, the dollar change one, you can see that is up six hundred and sixty-four thousand for the town capitals up about sixty-three, our debt services up about fifty. And the Board of Education, we have at about one point two. Moving on, this is the town operational costs in millions from two thousand and ten to two thousand and twenty-four. You can see it paints a fairly clear picture. This year, again, the town's increases up over six hundred thousand. And we'll have a breakdown of something. Next one is the similar for the Board of Ed. Same timeframe. Similar path. Consistent. Moving on, this is a pie chart. It paints a pretty clear picture of where the money goes in town. And the two beasts are the Board of Ed and the town operating budget. As you can see, it's a big pack van, as I like to say, and capital improvements is a tiny slice, but important. And obviously, our debt service is just managed so well here in the town of Talon is the third biggest. You move on, the next pie chart depicts the spending distribution of the budget. And so it's, this is a clearer picture of the town. There'll be another one of those coming up. You can see Public Works is the big one, debt service, general government, public safety are the top four on just the town size. All right, this is isolated pie chart of the town spending. Again, the beast in the ring is the Public Works on this one, then followed by General Government and Public Safety. And then the smaller ones on downs in there. Town expenditure drivers. So the debt service increased by point one point zero six or fifty thousand dollars mainly due to the impact of the Birch Grove Primary School. This will not have an impact on the mill rate due to the use of a committed fund balance that has been set aside in past years. Capital improvements supported by the general fund increased by sixty-three thousand. Expenditure drivers. So this is, this basically has to do with the bulky waste pickup and then the increase that our garbage and bulky waste and recycling have cost the town. But if you go on to the next page, it really gives a clearer picture of the expenditure drivers. And obviously, the salary increases and contracts are about two hundred and forty thousand. The insurance, health insurance went up about a hundred and sixty-seven. The increase in road sale really, the cost really went up. And again, there's your, there's your spending on the, right after that is the trash. We did see some savings through some negotiation with the resident troopers and some other decreases. But that's, that's probably the clearest picture on the town side of where everything went. Let's look at the impacts of the mill rate. And the proposed mill rate is, our proposed mill rate is at three thirty-seven point forty-three, an increase of point eighty-five mills, as I mentioned earlier, when you compare it to last year's three thirty-six point five eight. But moving on. The tax impacts on the town. This is important for our residents. We want them all to look at it and see it when they're looking at when they're doing their own financial plans that so many of us have to do. This, this gives a fairly good picture of where you kind of find where your house is, what it's worth, and how it's going to affect you, your property taxes, how this is the history of the approved tax revaluation, the increases or decreases over the past six years for the average residential home, kind of similar to what we were just talking about. Go all the way to the right, and that kind of gives you, paints a picture of where the taxes have been going for an average residential home. But you can see it's moved around both up and down. So going on to the capital budget, capital budget is, you know, everything from streets, parks, facilities, buildings, technology, all the assets basically that we have in town that need to be purchased, that need to be maintained, that depreciate over time. So the capital budget is a plan that we do to try to responsibly maintain spending while keeping all our facilities, vehicles, everything in decent working order. There's also capital projects, and that's any project in the towns that capital improvement plan. And so any, any project should also exhibit certain characteristics to be included in the plan. And that's, you know, life expectancy that we want to see it, that's something we're going to spend it on lasts more than eight years. And the cost should be, you know, we're not, we're not throwing nickels and dimes on this thing, you know, these, these are larger costs in excess of ten thousand dollars. That's the theory. The next page is a look at the capital budget planning process. We started this back in October. Every, every single thing I tried to look at in the capital process and assess the need to it. And I can certainly speak to successes we've had in that process. And this council has assisted in some major successes in cutting back suspending in certain areas. Next page is the many types of funding that we have, funding sources we have here in the town. The newest one on the list is right in the middle there, the ARPA funds. That's been assisting especially with our capital improvement plan significantly. The next chart, this is a one-year CIP. This is a look at the one-year CIP. Departments on the left, funding source, the funding sources by column vertically from the top down. You can see each, right up the very top line, all the different types of funds that I've listed before. To the right, the total by each department. If you go all the way to the right side column going down, and then the bottom, the totals for each funding source. So again, this is for year one and the capital improvements plan. We're talking about what that entails moving forward here. Another major expense for the town is our water pollution or our sewer system. Our sewer gets pumped to the town of Vernon. Vernon has a water treatment facility. That treatment facility needed upgrades. We share a cost of that, those upgrades at about five point six-three percent. That turned out to be a pretty good chunk of change, and we're trying to fiscally manage that through our town. Fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, the general funding of that is a hundred thousand and sixty-four thousand from the CNRE. Some of our significant capital projects that we've proposed, we have a hundred thousand, again, as we discussed into our WPCA or sewers. Board of Education projects, a radio security upgrade. You'll hear me talk about some of the security stuff. These are, these are things that I would consider basic coming from previous lifetimes. The TIS modular roof replacements, those are the roofs off to the side or the modular units off the side of TIS down behind us, the TMS library, main office and carpet. While it, while it was getting older, we could have put it off, but we were looking at balance in future years, and now is the time to do it. You'll see our light duty vehicle reserve at fourteen thousand, and then the public security cameras and silent alarms. I won't get to where we desperately needed security cameras, but certainly want a silent alarm system in here for the protection of our staff here. Next page is the, the town vehicle, administrative vehicle reserve, a total of ten town vehicles and three Board of Ed vehicles. And this is depreciation for replacement. Some other significant capital projects funded by other sources. So CNRE, capital non-recurring. So the TIS security upgrade, again, I don't want to, I don't want to get too much into school security upgrades, other than there was certainly needed. The town high school audio replacement, they're using makeshift system now. And then the refurb of the TIS irrigation system for the sprinklers, which are in need of many repairs. Some major ARPA fund expenditures is the seclusion room, the TIS and TMS. I went with Dr. Will to look at those. And obviously, coming from again, a previous lifetime, there's some basic features that that room currently does not have that they probably should for safety as well as expense. A TIS nurse, the TIS nurses station and renovations for safety and security. Another big one, that one came out of our bet forty-one thousand. Moving on, some of the capital equipment, replacement of an F-250 pickup truck for parts, but that fifty thousand is coming out of our cemetery funds. We also putting on, we got more money this year for our cemetery fund through a grant. The replacement of a two thousand and eight DPW dump cloud truck. That's the, the full-size cloud trucks that you see in the wintertime. Plow on the highways and also used for certain construction projects. It should be noted that we are having a consultant look at the need for the vehicles and apparatus that we have in DPW, something I did with the consultant plan we already had on file with public safety. Now we're going to do that with DPW. Again, with some successes that we've already had. We're going to replace some firefighter protective gear that I did not want to skimp on. And then the refurbishment of tanker one forty. Those who don't know are most of our town does not have fire hydrants, so we got to bring the water to the fire. And that's what tanker one forty, we have three tankers here in town, they need refurbishment. Occasionally, the arts building right across the street, we're going to put a new roof on that. It had come in at forty-five thousand. Director Lathan was able to find an estimate and get it at thirty. And then the, as we look to put solar up at the dump off old Stafford Road, the old dump and the old transfer station, sorry. There's a storage building up there that we use for multiple things. That's in darn near complete disrepair that we're going to refurbish. Emergency generator for the highway garage, that's the generator that during a snowstorm, if that, that goes out, that's what keeps our pumps going so that our apparatus and our plows can keep plowing the road. The retrofit of a generator for our Parks and Facilities garage. We also, what we're going to pay for on a CNRE, keep in mind that that generator was an extra generator that we got when the Birch Grove project or the school needed to be rebuilt. We were able to get the generator from there and bring it, and now we're going to retrofit it to the Parks and Facilities garage. ARPA again, so the jail renovations and an ADA ramp at a hundred thousand. And then so the ADA and accessibility to the town green and disabled veterans access to the memorial here on the green. That, that currently sits at five hundred. That is a very round and just an educated estimate. We're waiting for an actual estimate. It should be coming any day. I know you've probably heard me say that if you feel like. The town, town Public Works, this is again, patches of capital projects from other sources. The tree trimming town is at seventy thousand dollars. That's out of our tar grant. The streets and roads, drainage and construction design that also out of the town aid road grant where our town grant at forty-nine thousand. A pavement management this year, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, also on the tar grant, but also some low SIP as well. And then road improvements, eight hundred and twenty thousand, that's to keep to have roads repaved through the system that we have, and that's part of the five million bond funding approval from November, I went to referendum in November of two thousand and eighteen. This is a picture of the past five-year general fund capital contributions. And you can see that that number has increased. We're still well under one percent. Proposed three point, I'm sorry, three hundred and nineteen thousand this year fiscal year twenty-four. Then this is our debt management plan that director, financial director, Lisa Hancock handles. And so for fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four, the general fund budget will increase by fifty thousand to four million, seven hundred and fifty thousand. They'll remain at that amount through twenty, twenty-five, twenty-six. The negative amount listed below under the amount to be paid from debt service fund is the amount to be contributed to the cover of the total debt payments. Much of this is an impact due to the debt of the Birch Grove School and potential renovations to the firehouses. The plan will allow the budget to begin reduced, the beginning, allowed to begin being reduced in twenty-six, twenty-seven to eventually get reduced to four million, five hundred thousand or an amount determined by town council. Once the budget returns to this level, the plan is to begin paying for capital, begin paying for building capital reserves to fund future projects on a pay-as-you-go basis as the debt falls off the books. And then is the schedule that lies ahead. April nineteenth is obviously a big meeting and April tenth, the council here will discuss the budget also. And then we look forward to May second on the annual budget referendum. I thank everybody for everything they've done to contribute a robust conversation to this, and we look forward to the same tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Foley. So that brings us to item three, which is public participation. Since we're in a hybrid format, we're going to bounce back and forth between in-person and remote. Just as an quick reminder, if you are in person, you can state your name and address to the record. If you are on Zoom, you can hit star nine or the race can function if you're something that you will try and manage and go in order based off of who we see for the hands raised, but we'll start with in-person. So anyone from the public would like to speak first, Karen Ray?
Karen, I'm around fifteen roll in. At the last town council meeting, I attended where we were talking about board of budget. Mr. Khan and Mr. Regan asked where the parents were. Well, we're here.
Thank you.
Ask, receive. We are here in person. We are here on Zoom. I would ask that those families that are here tonight to advocate for our school system raise their hands somehow, some way. Couple of things I just want to point out high level. The additional reductions that Dr. Willett has had proposed. These are in addition to reductions that were already made during the process. He had already cut for even bringing the budget to the Board of Ed. So I think that's an important thing to bring out continually and to the public. Things like putting off the rate of increase from that transportation company is kicking the can down the road. So I guess we all should plan on being here next year for the same conversation. Because that's what's going to happen. We shouldn't have to do this. We should be able to trust you, to trust the superintendent, to trust the process. And it's not happening. It's dysfunctional. An education budget is a plan. It's a statement of values. It's not a crystal ball. We need more than a one-year cycle to have a plan for this community. Maybe something like a three-year stabilized plan would help. So when the storms come, we can weather them. Companies do organizational strategic planning, and so should we as a municipality. Let's try and get there. Because this can't happen all every year. My youngest is a senior at the high school. Been doing this a long time. I don't want these families to have to keep doing this. It's not right. I want them and their children to have a great education. But even when I was fighting for great education, we were fighting for what previous families had. This is a vicious cycle and is wrong. Underfunding our schools for years continues to hurt us. The point seven eights, the zeros, not in line with inflation at all hurts us. And it continues to hurt us to this day. So we can't weather this storm now. I'm advocating for an increase to board that budget and the opportunity to vote on a community budget that retains resources. Thank you very much.
Okay, we get the next person here online, Joanie. Or Tony's iPhone, I think that might be throwing roaring.
Hi, good evening, Tony Mora, forty-two Center Road. Hearing the request for scores last meeting really struck a nerve with me. Test scores are often touted as an objective way to measure how good a school is. And while this is true to a degree, they don't tell the whole story. I'm a parent of a ninth grader who's part of special ed and on an IEP. He's in standard LA and based on teacher recommendation, he's not taking a foreign language. I understand he's not unique in this. However, I do worry how competitive he will be. When it comes time to fill out college applications, I worry even more when I see potential cuts like a Tallinn High business teacher, Tallinn High Child Development Program and teacher, Tallinn High Math Coach. These are services and pathways that will directly impact my child and most every child in Tallinn schools. Despite receiving services the last four years, his English literacy aspect scores continue to be below average. He continues to fumble over multi-syllabic words and barely engages in class because he's too worried about embarrassing himself. This is the direct impact of continuously underfunding our schools and a result of a mom who can't afford outside tutoring. So you can look at the scores of those that are thriving and think you've done a magnificent job. But I'm going to ask you to take a good, long, hard look at my son's scores and those children with similar or even lower scores and know that you failed them over and over and over again. You are entrusted to make this enormous decision, although it was so callously said multiple times. The council doesn't have the burden of finding and figuring out what such devastating cuts would look like. In essence, the superintendent is qualified enough to figure out the aftermath, but not competent enough for you to accept his proposal. It is no secret that Dr. Willett has been sounding the alarm for years, yet it continues to fall on deaf ears. I am begging you to step up, rise to the challenge and work to ensure the kids today have the same or better quality education as those of you on this board whose kids have already benefited from Tallinn schools. Extreme times, unusual insurance blips and COVID fallout call for unfamiliar measures like a bigger BOE budget. And while most of us felt significant hardships in reductions in salaries, me included, the town of Tallinn, on the contrary, saw their reserves increase. Flat out, a three percent BOE budget is just fraudulent. Thanks, everyone, for your time.
Rebecca?
Good evening, Rebecca Risley, one oh three Mountain Spring Road. I'd like to address the calls often come about transparency for the education budget. From the numerous readings that I've attended, the staff and Board of Education have really dug deep. Worked hard, they've gone as deep and as far and gotten as creative as they can possibly get. They've found every efficiency. They've looked under every rock for stray dollars, and they've done it all in the public eye. They've done their due diligence, and then they did it again. And again. And again, they're not missing anything. When the public needs to know really is that educational budgets must be somewhat fluid. There are always unforeseen circumstances that can cause shifts that cover contractual obligations, mandates, the most crucial areas. Tallinn's continued underfunding of our educational system year after year has had detrimental impacts that have been catching up to us despite our efforts of a caring staff that has always been hailed as doing more with less, making it work, figuring it out. When you walk into the high school and it's not quite as clean or the bathroom stall is missing toilet paper, or you can't dry your hands, remember the custodian that wasn't necessary. When you're paying out of pocket for a tutor because your child who used to get by fine in math is now struggling with some new concepts, remember the math interventionist that wasn't necessary. When your sixth grade student has some social challenges and the school can't address them because they're not on a specialized plan, remember the rope para educator that wasn't necessary. When your child can't get a class in their chosen high school pathway because a business teacher and a children's educational instructor have been eliminated, remember that those positions weren't necessary. When the curriculum isn't kept up to date or the expected standards aren't met of the reputation that Tallinn relies on to bring new families to town, remember that the team leads and the curriculum liaisons weren't necessary. And when we continue to struggle to find Paris offering some of the lowest pay rates of any surrounding towns for difficult challenging work, remember that more competitive increases were not necessary. When we continue to lose amazing these and teachers because they are overworked, overburdened, undercompensated and underappreciated, remember the reductions you determined were necessary. Thank you.
Next on line, Rainy B. Saw?
Hi, Rainy B. Saw, two thirty Grand Hill Road.
Hi, Rainie Bisa, two thirty Grand Hill Road. I can understand some frustrations on some people's minds around. The education budget, however, I think three percent increase is more than adequate. I was on the board of ed. In certain cases, cuts were proposed. That actually never happened, even though the budget passed at the lower rate. I think there sometimes are some scare tactics that are involved. And I understand that people will be upset that I'm saying that, but I saw it happen.
Ashley Paxton, I live at forty six Bon Air Hill Road. My perspective not only comes from being a mother to young children, but from being a working career professional with two full-time jobs. I'm speaking to you today with an expertise of license of a licensed and active Realtor for over the last six years. Supporting the board of education budget and investing in our students is not just relative for families or children in the school system. Everyone should be supporting a higher education and a strong school system because it directly impacts money in your pocket as a homeowner. This affects everyone in town directly, whether you have children or not. The National Bureau of Economic Research found that a one dollar increase in per pupil aggregate increases housing values in average of twenty dollars. This indicates for that the potential resident value education expenditure. Two decades of research by Duke University found that housing prices increased by fifty two cents per square foot for every percentage point increase in a school district test scores. By supporting funding our school, you directly impact the quality of education for the student. And in turn their test scores and from there the value of your home. As a younger family in town, I can show you that these concerns are across the board for other younger families in my same situation. We as a population have become more fluid and more flexible in where we can live and our options are plenty. So this is the same for buyers looking to move possibly here. A town survives and thrives from the rejuvenation that younger families, people and professionals can bring. We need to have something to offer people aside from the wonderful quiet neighborhoods. We have very few businesses, places to eat, places to shop. We need places that are going to attract newcomers. The school is an easy one to keep strong and it benefits the town as a whole. This comes back full circle to every resident and speaks to the value of your home. If a family begins to leave for better school systems, the value of your home will decrease over the years and it will be left and we will be left in a state that will be very hard to come back from. Please do not guide us down a slippery slope. Keep our town desirable, educated and valuable. I ask you to reinstate the original budget and support our town and our residents.
Yes, I just bring anybody on Zoom. If you'd like to participate, star nine with raise hand function. Give it one moment, but then I believe to the audience and we'll switch back to. In person. All right. So we'll go to the live audience.
Heather McCann sixty two Cross and Drive. Town Council, over the last four years, our children have endured massive amounts of stress and insecurity. They have lost loved ones due to COVID. They are abruptly told to stay home from school. Some lost friends and two teachers whom they had been with for. Five days for many, many years. We had no idea when the pandemic would end. The aftermath of COVID of the COVID pandemic has left children with learning loss, social emotional issues, anxiety, and depression. There is an increase in chronic absenteeism, hospitalizations, children who do not want to leave their homes because they feel insecure. Weekly, they are hearing of mass shootings across the country. They are in shock. They have insecurities. They're in a constant state of fight or flight. Now is the time they need to feel stable. They need a hand on their back saying, we got you. Now is when we give them more, not status quo and certainly not less. The last thing they need is more disruption to their lives, more teachers leaving, fewer supports and drained and or underappreciated staff. They need to know their community and adults in their life will take care of them. They need to be lifted, propped up and seen. Our kids are struggling academically, emotionally and socially. This cannot be ignored. This is not just another budget year. Be a part of this solution, not the problem. Help our kids.
It's also one of the fact where either hands all up and down next is you have any raised hands on Zoom. So maybe it was.
Just kind of before dividing, I'm going to kind of track this. As another product of college education. How Brian mentioned trash yard. That's just a simple example of one service provided in college. I'm not standing here just to talk about college education. We need to support all college services and invest in talent. I love that you said the housing, right? We have current predictions being it's being fun right now. Friends of ours just sold their house in South Winter for eighty thousand dollars, almost eighty thousand dollars more than you put it at the market for. Everything in South Winter is going up because their education is strong. I would just ask you. To invest in our schools. It's not just about maintaining the status quo, but improving them overall. About creating opportunities for growth. It's about ensuring that our students have access to quality education that prepares them for the future. At some point I'll have a conversation with Dr. Will about the things I saw in talent that weren't helping us prepare for the twenty first century. Right now, we need to continue to invest, but also invest in our senior center, in our infrastructure, in that we have trash services for our town. While I understand it takes, you know, we have to pass a referendum to get this done. You, most people of the town council on Zoom, need to support and a budget that will invest in all of college. Students, seniors, all residents. Thank you.
We'll continue with interest in the station.
Bethany Lusko twenty six Deer Meadow. Good evening. First, I want to thank, start by thanking the town council, the board of ed for their countless hours and dedication that has been put into this budget process. I'm sure it feels daunting, but the importance of your role is vital. So thank you. A few weeks ago, I was able to listen to the ARPA subcommittee. I was. So happy to hear Council Nuccio and Council Ute Check having a civil, very productive conversation from both sides of the table coming to an agreement. That night I was going to say, well done. And for that, I was going to say, thank you. However, I can't. As a registered Republican, I was embarrassed, embarrassed that what was agreed upon in one hour, a few hours later, was completely undone. Hours later, I'm a mother of two students, but also come tonight concerned for all students now and the future of Tallinn. I want to express my utmost dissatisfaction for the proposal, essentially zero increase for the board of ed budget. At a previous meeting, Councilman Luba asked for data to show that our children slash schools are suffering from continuous cuts. And that then there can be consideration to increase the budget. Magic eight ball data just can't appear. You can't look back at data five years ago and say that can compare to what this generation faces in our current world. The residual effects from the pandemic, mental health needs and the increased special needs. The cuts that have been made most recently and was proposed now will set new low standards for Tallinn, which is. Not will not show up in so-called data for a couple of years, years that Tallinn will not be able to rebuild. As I thought about writing this, I thought about a simpler term. Is it possible that if I don't put gas in my car, it will still turn on? Can I avoid oil changes and assume it will continue to run? How about if I just avoid having my brakes checked? Will my car miraculously stop with my kids in it? The answer is no. We cannot continue to provide discounted bargain store bottom of the barrel attention to what our school needs. We need counselors, we need team leads, we need math and business coaches, teachers and curriculum liaisons. Ask yourself, if you do not provide the school what is asking for, what it needs and how it needs to get there. How can anyone expect our school system to sustain itself for future years? The more you cut now, we will all lose more. I have repeatedly heard from council members that it's not the responsibility of the town council to decide where the BOE will cut funding. While this may be true, it is also not fair to put five dollars a gas in my car and expect it to drive to Canada. Funding the BOE now means a future for talent, disregarding the needs put forward by the board of ed will only demonstrate. The carelessness of this town council and their opinion of our town and our students' future. It's time to change the narrative of we can't to we can. As I mentioned earlier, as demonstrated in the ARPA meeting, we can support this town. Our students, our teachers and one another. I saw it. I did. I saw it with my own eyes. It happened. Both parties agreed. It's just a matter of following through and implementing. And when I dropped my daughter off at dance before coming here, I was reading this and she said. Oh mom, is that what you're going to say? And I said, yeah. She goes, good luck. Go help our schools. So please, thank you for listening and.
People with their hands raised on Zoom. So we'll start with Sarah Golden. Sarah Dagan Goldman.
Hi, yes, Sarah Dagan Goldman, one sixty three Old Post Road, Talent. Thank you for the opportunity and all of the work on the town's budget. I'm a mother of young children and a K twelve educator. I just simply ask that you please reinstate the full board of ed requested and past budget and show that our town is worth the investment forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. We'll actually go forward and do some more.
Hi. Yeah, I think I, you know, I agree with what a lot of the other. Public participants have already said, when I first started paying attention to how our schools are funded, probably six or seven years ago. I had assumed what I was seeing was a one time or a short inability to fund our schools. And now we have this ongoing pattern of inadequate funding. We're not supporting our schools in the way surrounding communities are. And honestly, my kids are starting to notice. And I'm really worried about morale of the teachers and the staff and students. And I really think we should let the initial proposed budget go to referendum and not one with an arbitrary cap. Thank you.
Thank you, Smart. And actually just one quick point, just if you could state your address on the record, I don't think I've said beginning. We'll get back to that, but we'll switch to in person and then we'll go back to Joe Goldman. So.
Caroline Hardries twenty eight Charles Street. Last town council meeting, the question asked is whether a budget less than the budget accepted by the BOE is sufficient enough to meet goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty four. The answer is no, absolutely not. I am deeply concerned about the town manager reducing the BOE budget three percent as a starting point of discussion. In my opinion, this is the result of our board of education not uniting as a whole in supporting and advocating for the needs of our school system to the town council this year and in years past. The end result is a budget that does not adequately support all learners, our staff and our administration. I could list each area impacted by a reduction in budget, but at this point, I don't see that making a difference. This council has heard and seen the data and the effects of these low percent changes time and time again. If you do not understand the gravity of this situation, then at best, you are not listening and paying attention to what has been presented to you. At worst, the data simply does not fit your agenda and has been dismissed. Our children have been dismissed. When young families inquire about the town and education, their narrative reported out by individuals with students in our schools. Is that the town of Tallinn is not a community that invests in our children and the educational system. Tallinn seems focused on maintaining a retirement community, not a well-functioning and thriving town that supports families and our future generations. This is currently the face and reputation of Tallinn and it needs to change. What is our town vision? Who are we as a community? How can we support the school community of twenty three hundred students who deserve our very best? There will be difficult budget years, but what I cannot accept is a town council in a BOE not willing to promote and back the budget prepared by the talented educators. Were quite literally holding the system together despite lack of support from community officials. Thank you.
We will jump really quick to some artists to have them have their address for clerk's record and then we'll unmute Joe.
Smart Bush twenty Forest Lane, Tallinn.
Thank you, Smart. Appreciate it. All right. And then we'll go to Joe Goldman.
Good evening. Thanks Chairman Jones for the time. So yeah, Joe Goldman, one sixty three Old Post Road. Just first, I want to say thanks to the Board of Education and the Town Council for the time that you're putting in. To trying to get this right. It's a difficult process and I appreciate that you're working through it. I want to echo the sort of sentiments that we're hearing pretty much across the board here. I think that. We all want Tallinn to stand out as a town that values and promotes good education. And I think that really starts with with the budget as a statement of. The way elected officials in the town itself feel about education in the town. So I, you know, I want to say as a teacher myself, this is something that educators pay attention to. And I think that a show of support from the Board of Education and the Town Council goes a long way in raising morale in schools, which we heard about earlier tonight. I'm sure teachers would appreciate that. And my understanding is that most education budgets. Spend the most on teachers themselves. And I think we're perhaps having the wrong conversation here. I think. The question really ought to be asked, how do we increase the pay of teachers in the Tallinn district? I was looking at. The amount that nearby districts are paying teachers and so region nineteen is a neighboring district. So starting region nineteen makes approximately four thousand dollars more in salary at step one. And so what that equates to is approximately a ten percent difference in pay. And so for people unfamiliar with the hiring process, what often happens is that districts that offer more pay get first choice. When it comes to a candidate pool. I think we would want Tallinn to have. First choice when it comes to teachers because that probably has more to do with the quality of education in the district than just about anything. And so instead of talking about what we may or may not want to cut, I think we need to start having a different conversation about how we increase. The pay for teachers in the district so that we can be even more competitive with neighboring districts. And I think that would say a lot about. You know, Tallinn and what we stand for and it would be an investment in in the future of the town and certainly in the students in the district. So. You know, I guess I've said more than I could go on, but I really appreciate your time. I know this is a difficult choice, but at the end of the day, I hope that. It's very clear at the end of this process that we support our students and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Back to you in person. Back in the back.
Any trials? I came here approximately twenty five years ago. My children have grown now, but we came here because of the education. I remember today, so looking, came here because of the education. Everyone in this room, you are here in your respective professions or whatever you do because of education. You're not here because of magic. You're here because of education, because someone took the time to teach you. Yes, as parents, we believe we can teach everything. We're going to be superheroes to our kids no matter what. But there are some things we can't teach. Math, some of us can't teach. Science, I don't know about you, I can't teach a lot of things. I cannot teach French. But those are things that have done that by teachers, people that have pulled resources. So let's take a look at this argument. First of all, I keep asking myself, why are we a two point nine percent town? Is that a magic number? Why does it always have to be? We can't go past that. We can't do this, but we'll upset the apple cart. Trust me, for the folks that can't afford it, or because they're a little popular, we need to look at that. But our metrics do not bear out that we can't go above two point nine. We can't. What would you do if inflation went twelve percent? Would you still go two point nine? We have to invest in resources so that the school systems can teach our children like they taught mine. And even though my kids are grown, I still support education because someone did it for me, I think. And because they did it for me, it's my turn to do it. And I'm blessed because I know that everybody is. I can afford it and I know. And I'm blessed, because I know that everybody is, I can afford it. And I know that everybody can. I get that. But for the most part, we cannot continue on 2.9 and expect to get still results. So somebody tell me, what's with the 2.9? You have to pay for the good resources if you want better education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chairman Goldsmith?
Hi, Deirdre Goldsmith, 21, Marlboro Glade. First, I want to thank the Superintendent, the Board of Education and the Town Council and the Town Manager. I want to go on record requesting that the town residents be provided the opportunity to vote on the fully funded educational budget put forth by our Superintendent and the Board of Education. And I'm hearing today the overwhelming support for this tonight, and I hope that that actually matters today. Thank you.
Audience, anyone like to approach the table and see their name and address?
Amanda Doyle, A-Like-B Drive Extension. I'm a Talon parent and a teacher in a neighboring town. I want to thank those on the Board of Education who did what's right and approved the superintendent's budget. Above all else, I felt should do what is best for children. I know that every aspect of town government is important and the costs for many necessities are high. But I hope that each of you on the Town Council feels that Talon's children are the most important aspect of our community. Providing them with quality educational opportunities and social and emotional services is a necessity. We want our youth to be successful academically and emotionally. Do you want more young families in town? Poorly funded schools have already and will continue to cause families to move elsewhere or not move here at all. Fund what's most important. Reinstate the education budget that's approved by the Board of Education. Thank you.
Go back into the audience.
Good evening. Mary Rose Bear, 37, Ryan Road. I don't have anything prepared because I like to listen. I also support it being fully funded with the original budget or by our superintendent. It's hard, right? We live here. We love this place, right? We want to promote it. We want to be excited about it. And then I want to say, our education is a terrible kind of a bad bar. And I don't mean it, Dr. Willet, that it's not great. But it's only great because they're trying so darn hard to work within the parameters and the budget that they got. It's not that it's great because we've got additional things and enhancements and all these things that we want to work on, right? Like, they're doing the best. I'm a booster. There's boosters, there's PPOs here. We're out there trying to raise money to do things that that in some towns are probably fully funded through taxpayer dollars. We just had all American athletes that not one penny of them goes to they're fully funded by their families. Not one penny of this town goes to them. All American athletes, right? Like, there are great things in this community and they're all here. So it's hard for us to say that my child is struggling. You hear a mom saying her child is struggling because of the education, it's failing that child. It's hard to hear. Because we want people to love our community as much as we do, but it's hard right now. There's people with contaminated wealth. That's the problem. But I couldn't imagine saying that you don't deserve clean water. I could never imagine that. And I would hope.
All right, I know. Everybody.
I, I'm fortunate enough not to have crumbling foundations, but I could never imagine not supporting tax relief. Who do? Makes a community beautiful is our members and supporting each other. The bow. Child, right? He's a sophomore freshman in high school. He's a kid. So proud of him. Right? But he's struggling too. And you know, lingering effects of COVID are not gone. They're not gone. I mean, the stuff that we talk about and try to work with them. I'm dedicated. So is my husband. Aren't lucky that we can sit down with our child and talk to him, work with him. Maybe not everybody has that ability. Maybe the mom with two jobs and a single parent can't sit there with their child. That's where we support education, right? So it's a village so that they don't have to struggle. That's all I'm saying. You know, fully support Dr. Willet's budget and the Board of Ed budget that was that was agreed upon by a majority. Not everyone, which is shocking, but by a majority. Thank you very much.
Then we'll switch over to you and get a couple new hands. We'll do Jen Galishant.
Hi there, Jen Galishant, 150 Timber Trail. As a Board of Education member, I feel like I've said a lot in our meetings in support of our budget, so I'm not going to say too much more on that tonight. I believe that this is a great process for our community and I just really want to give a heartfelt thanks to our community members who showed up tonight online and in person in support of the education budget. I also want to thank our superintendent who continues to work tirelessly to find ways to alleviate the cuts that board members like myself beg him to find other ways throughout the process. That's all. Thank you very much. Bye.
Thank you, Jenna. All right, we'll switch to in-person. See.
Sorry. Kate Harvard, better one of the goose. Lane. Honestly, it's gross that we're fighting over an increase that could be as little as $200 a year. I'm tired of having this argument, tired of saying the same things, tired of watching the bird and get deferred, the can getting kicked, et cetera. I'm sure some of you more seasoned counselors are too. I love living in Talon. I love the education my kids have gotten and I love the friends that I've made. I want to correct a point that was proposed today. Town Manager Foley mentioned a problem with the reduction in the ECS. The ECS, that stands for Education Cost Sharing Grant. This has been decreasing on a step-down formula since 2013. There's nothing new here. That's not a surprise. We knew this was coming. The Board of Ed has been managing that impact since 2013. Punishing the schools because the town has a high income, which is where that ECS comes from, that makes no sense. So I just want to say that. Three of our town councils are here to listen to the people. This is distressing, though they're hearing on Zoom. Thank you. Our community is looking to you, town councillors, to be here to show up. I appreciate that they're logged in, but it's not enough. That really is the theme of what I'm saying tonight. It is not enough. I'm here as a parent, as an aunt, as an educator to demand kindly that the Town Council reinstate the bare minimum ask from the Board of Ed in the budget for the Board of Education. I don't think it's too much to ask that students who are currently in the schools or who will be going to the schools have the same quality of education that students who graduated 10, 20, or even 30 years ago have. I don't think that's too much to ask. Town councillors, you asked us to come. We're here. We came last time. We're here again. We're asking you to make the budget fall for the Board of Education, or at least that's what I am. Maybe I'm using the royal we. I don't know. Once you make the budget, please advocate for that budget to be passed. Tell the residents why we need to vote yes in the referendum. We need you to fight for the seniors in high school, the preschoolers, not to mention the brave firefighters and our seniors. Talent is so worth it. Let's act like the community we are. Thank you, everybody.
Hi, Julie Brennan, 127 Ellington Road. Good evening. I'm a parent of three kids in our public school system ages 11, 10, and 7. I'm in support of the increase of the school budget and I stated so in email to the Town Council. I also sent an email to the Town Council after the last meeting. I'd like to thank the one and only person who took the time out of their day to send me quick replies to my emails. This person was coming. So thank you for your replies, coming. I really appreciate it. I'd also like to mention that I'm an unaffiliated voter who's voted mostly Republican for the past few years. My husband is a registered Republican. We both agree that we need to support funding for schools. We all need to come together and support our children, our schools and the school budget. So thank you very much for your.
Thank you, Julie. Move back to in-person participation.
Cynthia Flynn, 145, Elton, New Orleans. I don't need to repeat everything that everyone has so eloquently said tonight. So I won't, but I just want to let you know that I also would like the town to put the 6% increase that Dr. Willet and the Board of Ed approved out for referendum. If the town residents, if you feel that the town residents don't want to spend that much money, then they'll show that in the vote, but give us the chance to show you what we.
If no one on Zoom, so we'll continue with in-person. Anyone like to approach the table and just again see your name and address for record. We do have some Dana Felton.
Hi, can you all hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Good evening. Dana Felton, 11 Harvest Lane, Talon. Mom, parent of two students at TIS and Board of Education member. I would just like to say, first of all, first and foremost, I appreciate everybody's involvement, not only this evening, but throughout this entire process and and the years of making this process come to where we are today. I do know, you know, firsthand that it is a lot of time and effort and a lot goes into the budget process. So thank you, Town Council, for having this public forum so that we can hear from our community. I, like Jen Galishant, am not, I have expressed my concern, have expressed my questions, has spoken with the rest of the Board of Education through different forums, emails, budget pathways through Dr. Willet. And we've raked this thing with a fine-tooth comb. I have expressed my advocacy for the original proposed budget throughout this process, and I will ensure that, you know, communicate that I'm still in support of that original board budget. But I would like to say, I think that it's our jobs as folks in the community on the Town Council and folks on the Board of Ed and our other boards and commissions to listen to our community. And a lot of folks have sent in emails. There's a lot of folks sitting in this room via Zoom and physically in that room asking for our assistance, asking for our support, asking for us to support not only seniors, not only the rec department, the Board of Education and across the board to make Talon whole. I really think that having an adequate budget is is one that supports across the board, not just makes it through. We need to make sure that we're getting prepared for our future. We're not splitting it, you know, town versus school. We really need to look as Talon as an entire community. And I don't know who said it, but several people have said how much they love Talon. They love Talon. Families love Talon. People want to be here in Talon. If we don't continue to fund Talon as a whole, we're not going to have that same conversation year over year. Again, I wanted to express, I do support the full budget. I support Dr. Willet and what he presented. I support the families that are communicating this evening. I support the all the community members that are speaking this evening and have spoken throughout the years. I think it is crystal clear what our community is asking of us and the Town Council. So thank you all for your time. I appreciate it and have a lovely evening.
Thank you. All right, move back into public participation. Oh, is that a hand raise?
Hi. If you don't mind. Hi. Hey, Talon Green. Thank you guys for your service, all the council members and Town Manager Foley for your service today. And especially on this day that some of us might be a little bit tired maybe from staying up for a game or something like that, I'm saying. It really is great to be in this room with so many people that feel really passionately about what they want out of the game for their students, for their kids and for everything that our community. And I agree with many of them here. As you know, one of your responsibilities as the council is to ensure the continuity of services in our community here. I understand that means difficult decisions have to be made. And I know this is a particularly difficult time right now. All that said, the board of information that was provided by the Board of Education and the Superintendent made it clear that a proposed budget increase of 3% for the Board of Ed doesn't actually ensure continuity of services, unfortunately, for the next budget year. Doesn't actually, 3%, doesn't actually fund high-quality schools, which I'm particularly invested in, being in education myself. In fact, we'll require cutting some positions in services such as map intervention services and curriculum liaison team leads which are critical to keeping the district running smoothly, which now is really important. To have the opportunity as a council to provide residents with an opportunity to vote on a budget, which in fact fully does fund those schools and ensures high-quality education for the next budget year. By raising the amount of the Board of Education budget that's put forth to referendum. I respectfully regret that you do that. I'd also like to add that, well, I do fully understand that it is not up to council members to make decisions about cuts that might have to happen. It does not absolve members from the responsibility to acknowledge that cuts will have to be made and, you know, take action to stop it. So it's free time.
Yeah, actually, we're having hand raised for, assumes we're going to do Joni, but then we can go to you next.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Jones. I just wanted to say that I've been a special education paraeducator in the town of Talon for over 14 years. I've worked in every school in our district. And the students that I once supported in kindergarten, I now support in high school. And I definitely know that COVID has put an impact on all of them. They are struggling emotionally, mentally, physically, psychologically and socially. There's less motivation to complete any kind of assignment, study for tests, do homework, and behaviors have increased significantly. The paraeducators help the teachers. The reason that I moved to this town back in 1999 was because of the educational system. Having lived in Manchester and Vernon, Talon was the right place for me. I used to work at the University of Connecticut. I promote higher education with the students that are taking, just took SATs last week. And tomorrow, they actually, the juniors are taking a science test. We like our SAT scores to look good. And the only reason that they're going to look good is with the help of paraeducators and teachers being paid and compensated with a budget that can fund our town. So I am more in favor of an increase in the Board of Education budget. You pay for what you get in this town. And if you want the education to be good, you really need to help the school system. Thank you very much. By the way, I'm Jody Coleman, Marziyalo, 79, Talon Green. Thank you.
Now, you're good. You can approach the table just so that the microphone picks you up.
Good evening and thank you guys all for all of your time. I've raised four children here. I love Talon. A couple of things that I'm hearing is like, I know all my kids would come home from school and say, Mom, you have to go vote. They're going to take away art. They're going to take away music. Can I do? And they would, that's what the teachers would be telling them. And so I was a little bit, you know, disturbed about that. I ask, I know a lot of people come here, they move to Talon for the education, but do they stay? I'm 60 years old. We have three homes, one in Ellington, two in Talon, my husband's business. I do. And had to go through the nightmare of the crumbling foundation. We have a house on Mile Hill Road with also the well. It doesn't, we're talking about children, though, here. Not about that. And I can tell you, that was a nightmare. I wouldn't wish those two things on anybody. Okay? And when people don't vote for a really high budget, And when people don't vote for a really high budget, hearing a lot of things, they always go, oh, well, we always make it really high, you know, and we know it's going to be knocked down. I don't know the truth to that or not. I just know that not everybody goes out and both parents are having you know, great success, successful jobs. I bring my children to church in town. I definitely have helped out. Mrs. Leach's class in second grade and real mother tried to participate in any fundraisers and all that. But not, we were trying to keep the access so we can say, I want to live here forever. I don't want my taxes to be so high that I can't stay here. I mean, you said you were worried about the seniors too. Well, I'm sixty. I'm getting there and I'd like to stay here. If my husband dies before me, will I be able to afford to stay here? I don't know. A lot of people move here, but then I notice houses for sale and they pick up after their children, do their wonderful Talon school system and they leave and they go somewhere else. I'm not saying that all people do that, but that happens as well. So, no, I'm definitely for children and I hope you guys do a great job and with your heart, you think of everybody. And COVID really, that, that hurt us all. So I have to say is, you know, we can't ask our school to do everything, parents' job to be, to spend maybe more time with their children at home. Maybe work less or something to accent what their, you know, their emotional needs are. Even my two grandchildren in Ellington, they go to East Catholic, but um, they definitely struggled as well. They're, they're suffering for it. I think everybody is. And businesses did. I know both of ours do, but we have two businesses in Talon. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Sorry, did you get your name actually? My apologies.
Of course. Julie Kusan, ten Lamont Lane, Talon, Connecticut.
Thank you. Any hands raised on Zoom? So I'll be back to in-person if, oh, Jackie.
Sit down.
My chairs there.
Yes, we know, rack and coming up. I had a million thoughts, a million things going through my mind. One is, my name is Jackie Cole, thirty-four, Susan Drive. We moved here, my husband and I, because of the school system and because we worked in Parkford. We've been happy in this community. We've made good friends. So, no issue there. It was funny, my two kids now are eighteen, freshmen in college in twenty-one. But as a town resident, I do want to see the school system supported because I believe there is a connection between who's the, your house value and a good school system. So that's one. Two, I'm a full-time working mom. I had an opportunity with my job. They allowed me to take off some time to help out and be a PTO president for TIS, help with the Booster Club. And what I learned and seen through those activities, you can only fundraise so much. You can't, you can't impact our fundraising from a booster club or from a TIS perspective. You reach the classroom. And that's where we need people and teachers in the classroom. I was just having a conversation with my boss. You know, I work for an insurance company, there's reductions. And I just had a request from another group asking for some information that I'm unable to supply because the people that used to supply that no longer can. So it comes down to, for me, the capacity and the bandwidth, right? When you reduce your capacity, you reduce the bandwidth and the services that you can provide to the community. And while I'm advocating for the school, I'm also advocating for the library and for the fire department. Because I have a mother-in-law who's ninety-three, she's living, in, living in Parker Place. It's been a great opportunity for her to be close to us while she's, while she's aging, topless, ninety-three. And she's had a few phone calls or a few visits from the fire department for, whoops, I pulled the, the string by accident, or she actually did fall. Have to go to the hospital, but she's okay. But again, it's a community service that was there and available. They were great. They were fantastic. I was just driving home. There was a huge core on fire. I don't know if it came up on your, your, and when speeds or not. So I'm here to advocate for the schools, for the community, and just to continue investing in our town. I know times are tough. And you know, it's funny, this is the only, in a way, this is the only place where we as individuals have an opportunity to say, no, I don't want that to affect that increase. I don't want to do that, right? We have to pay more for fuel. We have to pay more for food. We have to pay more for gas. But I would say this is a service that we all need and it just adds value to our community. So thank you for your time. I know this is some difficult discussions I had, but thank you.
Go to Andrew and then we'll go to the public.
Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's time tonight. Thank you for all the hard work you're all doing. Andy Mangefico, seven Lorraine Drive. Just a couple of things I was thinking tonight when listening to everybody. My kids are still young. My oldest is just entering Birch Grove, first year. My, my youngest is eighteen months old, so we haven't really experienced a lot of the what maybe other families are experiencing in terms of learning difficulties or things of that nature. But when I hear people talking about their kids are having trouble reading, pronouncing words, things like that. And there's the, the resources aren't there to help them. How is that us succeeding as a town, as a school system? We're failing kids. We're failing our, our kids here. And it's just, it's crazy to think about that. You know, a town like Talon doesn't have resources for kids who are struggling. That's, it's, it's just crazy to think about that. The other thing was, someone mentioned not putting gas in your car, oil changes, and that's actually pretty pertinent. If we don't invest now and we don't do things for, just to maintain our schools, what are the increases in the budget going to look like when Talon starts to really take a nosedive in, in terms of reputation, in terms of prestige in school systems? We moved here ten years ago and one of the biggest things was school system. So when we have to try to recover, how much is that going to cost us? You know, what do the budget increases look like then if we don't do the things now? If you don't put oil in your car, you save the thirty, forty, fifty bucks every time, but then the engine blows up and you got to spend five thousand dollars to fix it. Lastly, I like the, the suggestion of, we had agreement from both sides on the budget. Give the people the chance to be able to vote on that agreement and vote on that budget. Excuse me, lose my voice here, but. I think that's the right thing to do. There was agreement for the Board of Education to go in and just change that to make the numbers work. Doesn't seem right for the town, doesn't seem right for the people here. I bring in the bulk of income in our household, so I understand struggle. I understand, you know, every time there's an increase, there's a struggle. But we're talking about our children here. If you believe that, you know, you want the best for our children, we need to invest in that. Thank you for your time.
Go back to in-public participation and then bounce back to Zoom, so. George.
Well, I won't give any applause. George, thirty-six, fifteen, John. One of the things is, we're not cutting spending, we're reducing the amount of increase, so it's not cutting. I would like to say we need to stop turning down growth. Talon's been notorious for my whole life, which I've lived here my whole life, but turning down growth. Everybody wants it to be a cute and pretty town. But then they all want more money for school. If you want school, it's put in warehouse somewhere. Let's put something in that gets some money in here. If you go to, in New Jersey on a turnpike, they got all these beautiful places and they have ten, fifteen restaurants inside them. You stop, you get gas, you get food, you're right back on the highway again. We could have done that right down here at the intersection or the next one up. There's plenty of things we could do, but nobody in this town wants, they want to keep it as a pretty town and a nice town. But quite honestly, there's a lot of seniors that cannot afford a pretty town. It was pretty when I lived here, when I started here and I went to school in this very room. So I understand what it's about. I, I would like to know where they think the money's coming from. Firstly, I'm on a fixed income in my food, in my oil and my electricity all run up. So if anybody has two hundred dollars that they would like to donate to me, I would like to tell you the chances are I still won't give it to the school. I'll pay one of my bills. Thank you.
Thank you, George. All right, now I'll switch over to Kevin's iPhone.
Hello, Kevin Ingram, thirty, Partridge Lane. I'm sorry. I'd like to ask the council, as so many have done tonight, to fully support the education budget as recommended by Superintendent Will. I think one of the biggest things for me, moved here fourteen years ago with four children, to put in the school system because this was such a good school system. I think what makes a school system good is retention and recruitment of the educators. Should be paramount to supporting, maintaining and growing a strong and healthy education program in our town. We have a ton of great teachers and administrators in Talon, but in my time here, I've seen way too many of them leave. We need more and not less. By supporting a fully funded budget, we're going to attract more educators to a great system. If we continue to make cuts, I'm not sure how we expect good people to come to our district. I'm not sure why anybody would want to come work for an unstable, unsupporting employer, especially when I heard tonight from one of the teachers that other districts are paying more money. I think the six percent is fairly low, especially when we look at the inflation in all over the country this year. I feel for all of our seniors and people who are on fixed incomes, but when you look at social security, it's going up a record of eight point seven percent this year. Six percent is still less than the eight point seven that our federal government has set for. Again, I'd ask the council to fully support and send to referendum the budget as recommended by Superintendent Will. Thank you.
Go back to in-person. Everyone's shy. We got someone on, on Zoom that can go next and then we'll go back. So, Lon Swann.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lan Sheng Huang of Fifteen Mountain Side. I'm a perfect Yucan with two young children at TIS and Birch Grove. I've heard overwhelming support to support a fully funded BoE budget and to provide really quality education to the children in town. And from all these comments, we understand there will be really long-term damages to our education with insufficient funding. We'll lose good teachers and many enhancement or supplementary programs will be eliminated. So I would like to add my support, stronger support, and I will vote yes on the full BoE budget. Thank you.
Back to in-person.
All right, Jamie Davis, twenty-three, Johnson. I want to start out with saying that if anybody is struggling, there are resources out there. There, there's tax relief for people. So, you know, if you're struggling with your budget, we can help you online. That, that's, that's an option for you. That being said, I have a kindergartner in school and he, he is struggling to learn how to read. He was referred to services repeatedly. Every single time he's denied, right? It wasn't until I escalated it with a PPT to actually get reading intervention for him. And he's at this crucial age where it's just, you know, that there's so much that it's a huge impact on him. And if you make cuts now, when we can't even afford to find space for him in intervention, I don't even know what we're doing here. This is, it's horrible. Anyways, I support the full budget. I support more than the full budget because it's not enough. Right now, as you stand, it's not enough. Thank you.
There's still no one on Zoom with their hand raised, but just as a quick PSA for anyone that's online, you can't raise hand or the start line function if you're on a mobile device. But I'll turn back to in-public participation. If there's any residents here that have not yet spoken that would like to speak. All right, we'll go back to online more time before we head toward the German. Michelle Harold, all right, Michelle Harold, and then we got gentleman in the green vest in back.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Michelle, you're good.
Michelle, ninety-four, Sugar Hill Road. I wasn't going to say anything, but I can't help it. Um. I can assure you, like, I have three children in the school district. I'm, I wanted, each, each is at a different school. And I've had some pretty intimate experiences in the elementary schools, and I can assure you that five percent is not enough. So to go to three percent is just a slap in the face for our staff. And I think it's really harmful to our students. They are all struggling. Whether they are outwardly showing it or not, teachers are struggling with, because students are struggling and we are not offering them enough support. And also, like, I've been doing this for a long time now. And when are we gonna, as a town, decide we're going to invest in our education system and not like continue to be conservative and cutting our resources for them because of all of the constant crises that we face that don't always end up being as bad as we thought they were going to be? So if we're using insurance as the reason to, you know, like, it's a lot of money. So if we're using insurance as a reason to cut the school budget, then that's, you know, how do we know? If we don't know if it's a blip, why don't we wait to stabilize it? And if we don't want to increase taxes, then find alternative ways, use more reserve fund to see if it is going to stabilize or if this is the future and we need to figure this out next year. So I just, really, can we just invest in our school system once? Thanks so much.
And gentlemen at the back.
I, Phillip, Missouri, two fifty-five, South River Road. I just want to say that I, I do agree with the, the larger budget put forward by the Superintendent of Schools and the Board of Education. And that, you know, you could say that the three percent is an increase, but in a time of six percent inflation last year, eight percent inflation, it's not an increase. I mean, there might be more dollars, but it's not more resources. It's not more staff. It's a, so.
Amanda.
Hi, Amanda Olson, one forty-four, New Road. I would like to echo the rest of the room with agreeance to increase the budget. My oldest daughter, back at the beginning of COVID, was in second grade. And her teacher, Ms. Peel, had caught that she needed extra assistance. And it was either hold her or actually get her tested. And she had gone through kindergarten and had expressed my concerns in kindergarten and first grade, and she was kind of just pushed along and she was given tier-two intervention, which she was pulled the, once in the day and put back in class. And every time she got right up to level, she was sent right back into the regular groups and she needed, there's my youngest talking to me. She needed more. And that teacher ended up leaving that same year because she was offered better pay in Southern County, Connecticut. And I think that that is a huge issue for for my household in particular, because I do have four kids. And my second oldest is also on the ninth beat. She was tested and she kind of was borderline ADD and dyslexia. And so now I have two that are in there and I have two more coming up that are not even in the school system yet. And so to see the budget just continuously get cut or cuts being made when we moved here originally ten years ago for the school system and we had an opportunity to move to South Windsor, who had a huge budget increase this year. And to, to just see ours get minimalized is, it's sad and concerning. And I just, I'm for the increase and I hope that you, I can echo another participant who said they just hope that you can put it to a vote. Just give the people a chance. That is the whole point of having, you know, a democracy. a democracy, so you can be heard and choose these things as a whole. Thank you.
Like to approach?
Jennifer Masi, 159 Woodhenge Drive. I had prepared some remarks, but then was moved by what a lot of people have said, everyone, and also moved by all the work that you guys have all done so far. So thank you very much. So I think a lot of people have put this better than I will. Initially, I was going to participate and try to advocate for certain staff that I understood were, you know, on the chopping block, so to speak. And I, I mean, I can't say enough about the stellar services this town provides, the stellar educational services this town has provided. While I only have one child, we benefited from this. You know, everyone here that either grew up here or has a child here, I mean, we are very fortunate. My husband and I, even before we had a child, moved to Talon because of the school reputation and the community and the caliber of the services and just what a wonderful town it is. Initially, I was going to talk to you about a special school librarian. Well, I understand maybe she will retain her job this year. But for all the people that retain their job this year, they're going to continue to be nervous for next year and possibly seek employment elsewhere. Who wouldn't for their families, you know, for their stability, for themselves, even if they don't have children themselves? And that is scuttlebutt, you know, that children are hearing, students are hearing that. Oh, okay, I might be spared this year, but what about next year? So that is something, the stabilization plan that a couple of people have mentioned. That's an excellent point. Dr. Willett, you know, has been asked to do the impossible. When I saw the list of the potential staff who were to be cut, I literally couldn't sleep a couple of different nights, woke up a couple of mornings ago thinking, holy cow, a custodian, math tutors, math teachers, business teacher, the custodians. I mean, what do they do? They work their buns off during COVID, and this is how we reward our hard-working staff. And believe me, I think all the citizens recognize the Herculean job that's before you. We appreciate it. We know that you've struggled through this. And we appreciate it. We respect that, and we respect what you're doing now, and we're grateful for it. My mother's a senior citizen. She's very concerned. She lives in Summers, very concerned about the Board of Ed budget, and, you know, that's a huge concern. We want to keep our senior citizens happy and thriving. It just, it makes me sad that in a town like Talon, this has continued to be an issue. My daughter's fourth-grade teacher, she was on the chopping block being the less senior person a number of years ago. She was a Talon native. She was offered other jobs. She came to Talon. The budget ended up working out that year and saved her job, but she'd already signed a contract with South Windsor because she had to have an income. She was young, bright, capable, beloved, and she was very professional. She was a role model, like many people in the school system and the community are. I want to give a shout out to our highway department, how incredible they are, you know, and so many employees of this town that work so hard. Bulky waste, maybe one place we could save. I couldn't believe some of the things we see out on the curb. People can pay for their own, if it meant the school system getting 200,000, I don't know the numbers, I'm sorry, I didn't look at that part. If someone paid for their own refrigerator or waste wood or a mattress to be disposed of, can we give that money to either capital expenditure or to the schools? Many people would pay for that. We're affluent enough that many people, the things I saw by the side of the road, you could donate them to restore. Someone could use those items. Granted, some might be broken, and of course, people on a limited budget need a place to, in an inexpensive way, get rid of their bulky items. You've been very patient listening to me, but quite honestly, I just was stunned when I saw the list. Nurse, state trooper, public safety reduction, the TIS, math and business, child development teacher. I know students who are looking forward to working with these people. They pre-nursing. Scholars or would-be scholars, the fact that we even considered cutting librarians from schools is frankly, I was appalled. And I would not normally ever speak to you, but I know you all care, and that's why you're here in your roles. And thank you very much for all the work you've been doing.
Let's see, you on Zoom, your hand raised. So we'll kick it back to members of the public. Anyone in person that would like to speak, they can approach the table and state their name and address for the record. Procedural matters, councilor, oh, Linda Scheidel.
Hi, Linda Scheidel, 81 Morgan Lane. I wanted to speak to mimic a lot of what everyone said tonight. I want to show my, my support for the 6% that Dr. Willett worked really hard on to go to referendum with, with that in the town council's proposed budget. I want the town to be able to vote on that. We don't have a great school system. We have a good school system. We don't have a great school system. We're kind of working on bare minimums. We have kindergarten class sizes of 18 kids with one teacher. One teacher with 18 five-year-olds. You've tried to do that. We don't have the paras to support those teachers, to help those kids learn how to be good students, to sit there and focus on their work. We have one teacher trying to assess a student while the other 17 are being five-year-olds and four-year-olds and riling up the rest of the class. We don't have support in these schools to help our kids become good citizens or best citizens that they can be. We need help, and to do that, they need to be funded. So let Dr. Willett show the town that he needs that, and let us vote and tell you whether or not we want them to have it. Thank you.
Go back to in person. If there's anyone in the public that would like to approach and speak, that'd be the time to do so. All right. Anyone else on Zoom? For our rules, Councilman Murray. Just like I, you're good. You're good to go.
My name's Freya Williams, 23, Barbara Lynn. This is my daughter, Sage Williams. Public speaking is not my forte. I had a little bit of pressure from the floor to speak and represent her tonight. So I'm here, and my daughter's here, because I strongly believe that you deserve a seat at the table when the decision is made that affect them. And this affects all of you in Talon and all the parents, all of our community. And they say democracy dies in darkness, right? Well, town manager, you cut, we'll look at it in half in the dark of the night. We didn't get an opportunity to vote on it. I think, as you'll see here tonight, these folks want an opportunity to vote on that budget. We support the cost incurred by this town. We know it is an expensive town to living in Talon. And thus, the state of Connecticut, the rest of the nation, inflation is high, needs are high. We can do things to help our lower-income community, but our children deserve more. They deserve better. We are capable of better, and we expect better from our elected representatives and our higher town manager. You can do more for our kids. We need more than what you're offering right now. I've listened the past couple of weeks. I'm extremely disappointed in apathy and the defeat that I've heard from my elected representatives. I am a voter. I am a public participant as much as I can be. I also work two jobs in the town. I own one home. I'm asking to give our school budget more money. Our children are our future. They deserve better. They can't vote, so I'm going to vote for them, and I'm going to vote yes. I think the majority of this room will too. Thank you.
Over to online, really quick. All right, not seeing anyone, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak that hasn't had a chance to do so? But it.
But at Morehouse, 89 Merlot Way. Been in town 40 years. I didn't move to town for the schools when we first got married. Then we had kids. We got involved with the schools, the sports, the scouts. We did all of that. My kids had a great education. The school was wonderful. It's still wonderful now that my grandkids are in school. I have two alone with a special need. All their needs are being met. So the point that has not had enough thought about tonight was a small population in town of people that are working paycheck to paycheck, the senior citizens. I've worked in a lot of homes, and sometimes I just fix things and do things because they need to be done. And I just think that, you know, someone mentioned social security. They got an 8% increase. Well, they didn't say how Medicare went up either, and supplemental insurance is why not. I know because I do my own. So I support the schools on a realistic budget, something that everybody in town can afford. I want to live here and retire here, but the money grabs every year. I can't. And a lot of people are moving out. I'm doing homes because they have to sell them, well, not because they want to, because they can't afford it here. I'm held hostage to this town because I can't sell my house because I don't have portable drinking water. So I have to pay all these taxes on a house I cannot sell, and yeah, it's my problem. But it could be somebody else's problem someday because of the road sale. So if I have to have water brought in, town going to, you know, it goes out to referendum. Are they going to help me? I've heard a lot of the crises and what the schools need. I agree. You know, I agree that kids need a good education. But it's the people in this town that have to pay these taxes to give them that education. And if we can't afford it, then what? I think you need to look at all of Talon, not just a section of the budget that's the biggest. Because it's all those other little parts. The town services are great. They saved my sister last October. They came three times in last January to get my mom. So yes, I will support a realistic budget. But again, I can't do anything because I don't have any portable water. But there's nothing in this budget that's that's going to help me there, but we're working on it. Thank you.
Go back to online. Is anyone in Zoom, starting either raise hand function? See, now we'll pop back over to in person, because anyone hasn't had a chance to speak yet. Oh, that's all right, councilor. This is really more the public's opportunity to speak, but I know Councilman Murray has emails that they'd like to reflect on and report to.
Sure, I have collected all the emails that have come into the town council email list regarding the budget. There are, just as a quick overview summary, there are 26 in favor of a Board of Ed budget staying with the Board of Ed submitted. Two, just general budget comments. Three, supporting the town manager's budget, and nine, asking us to decrease the budget from what the town manager proposed. The content of all of these emails will be submitted to the town manager's office to be kept in the minutes of this public hearing. We also have two emails, two submissions from local, from town groups. We have one from the mental health task force and one from the Veterans Recognition Commission. And those emails will also be included in my report.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember. All right. So is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak? All right, you know, Councilor Khan went to the back room to seek as a resident, so would you approach the table to speak as a resident business owner?
Well, I'll pay my taxes over here too, so. I got, as a residence, I got two point of view. My first one is I do support voter participation because we, I would, yes, the education. My theory is, myself, educating my kids. Because even though people, the kids are clear, they're very good. I tell them one thing. Because COVID is wrong, it is wrong, and it's true. And one more thing. Don't be like me. And it's more business, I know it's more business. I said, don't be like me. Don't work like me. Get this, get your education, please, I'm on that. I don't need. Make a living, it needs a living. You don't have to sacrifice a Sunday. I work my 200 hours a week. That's more than 2,000 feet of whatever it is, but I have to make it. So like, I do support. I do support it. I do support the talent and bring it on. I moved here about nine years ago because the same reason that is what the out, education. My daughter went to middle school from California. So she liked it, and it was. I have no problem. We've got this high school, that's what I call it, I know. One of the greatest school. And there is a good system out there, a little more sure. But my only frustration is, and it's not something on my, that's my side of the bar. It's not something I'm betting on you guys. I'm talking as a resident. My thing is last ten, less than last 10 years. Both education budget goes up about a billion dollars. Four, I think it's about four billion dollars in the last 10 years. There's a town it feeds there, they live by, what, eight over five thousand, ten thousand, twenty dollars. Not that billion, million dollars. 70% budget goes to education. 30% goes from there. You want to take another 10% out of it? 20% out of them. Let's say 20, let's say, let's take 20% out of the budget. Why that 20% is being built for? I don't think so much, because there's not much of whatever it is. Second thing is after money, we are looking at our, I'm looking at our budget. And I talk to many people. I say, I want to take the money out and give it to them. It's all so.
Are you speaking with?
As a resident. I'm talking as a resident. That's why I came from this side, not from that side.
Yeah, Councilor Khan, you should be addressing the council when you're speaking.
So like, after money, after money is like, you know what, I did, I did heard about it. I tried to educate myself, where that money is coming and what we can use. And I did ask too many people. I said, can we use our money and just give it to them? And so I drove a problem and get more on as a resident, as a residence. But everybody has a different opinion. If we can do that, we cannot do that. We can do that, we cannot. That we can do that, we cannot do that, we can do that, we cannot. So like. How? How to come? How to sacrifice it? If the town is going to sacrifice it, do they have monitors to give it to him? Uh, there's more taxes. Can we afford it? There are some people who can afford it, there are some people who cannot. So where to, where to sacrifice? And as I said, I do support him because. He is the. Born of the town. Our values, our town values, our houses, and everything else. It's like, we have to work. Together, that's the way I look at it. We have to work together and we have to come up with a solution, but it's like. We are not there. We are not there. So I don't know how to. And well, I'd like to make one more comment. That's for me. Me and like. When I was running as a town council, can I talk?
Yeah, as long as you're adjusting the council, it has to be as to the council. For the discussion.
I'm just, that's my comment. It's not something from is coming up on.
But it has to be about a bunch like this is public participation at this point is to the council. So I just want to make sure that that's the discussion is staying on the topic.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Is anyone else in the public that would like to speak either on Zoom or in person? All right. Maybe we catch a few more. Yeah. Brian, 145 Anthony Road. I just want to have the opportunity to be able to vote. On the budget that was proposed from the Board of Education, from Dr. Willett, and it was approved by the Board of Education. I don't have that opportunity right now, and I'm asking you to let the voters have an opportunity. Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public? All right. Anyone else online? Go, go on once. Going twice. All right, so at that point, we are done with people's participation. Bring to adjourn, I'll just open the board, if there's any. Comments or, oh, Councilman Ujich.
Hi, everyone, this is Colleen Ujich, town counselor. I apologize. I was late tonight. I had a family obligation that was planned. Before tonight, but anyways, I have read everybody's emails. And have been trying to respond to everybody, so if you haven't heard from me. You'll, you'll get something, and I'm so excited to see so many people. People are voicing their. Concerns, one way or another, I can tell you as a counselor, I am taking everything into consideration. And this is really weighing heavy on my shoulders right now, but I. Am listening to each and every one of you. Thank you again for coming out tonight, and I truly apologize for being late.
Murray's counsel. All right, so that brings us to item four, so I will entertain a motion to. 59. And PM?
So much.
So with my counsel.
Second.
I do my vice chair, Regan, it'll do a roll call vote since it's hybrid, so Councilman Ujich.
Aye.
Counselor Luba?
Aye.
Councilman Ujich.
Aye.
Counselor Murray?
Aye.
Counselor Khan? Bishop Regan? And I, I said as unanimous, we adjourn at 8:59 PM. Thank you, everyone.